Good evening. Perfect time, seven o'clock. I'll call a meeting to order. If anyone's recording, they pick it on. Thanks. First thought of our business is approve the minutes of November thirteenth. You guys read them? Did you bring your magic mat up then?
Yeah, I did.
You good with those, Mac?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written for November thirteenth.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Reposed. And next is the signing of the bylaws for Bay Point. The bylaw and covenant. Covenant's been reviewed by council and approved?
Correct.
So that big water plant has been reduced to this.
And it is under a covenant. It's been explained to the owner that no building permits are issued with a covenant. Notice there's a performance pond that's provided. But they've decided to proceed, and it fits with their phasing of the project, to go through a covenant process first and then develop the project as it goes along with the later construction of the units.
Do you know the date of approval? I know it seems like only yesterday.
September twenty-first. Well, it'd been a few months.
You want the majority on this?
Yeah, that would be appropriate to have a majority.
Who was present? You and I, were you a full member at that -- were you a full member in September?
Yes.
Yeah, Manuel was on.
Did he vote on Bay Point?
I believe I did.
Yes, he did.
I'm not sure if you did, Mac.
I don't think I was a full member at that.
Yeah. The surety they'll provide on a later -- at a later time. The building permit is only issued after the surety is provided.
Okay. And when are they gonna issue it? They're applying for permits, are they?
There's a representative of the -- of Bay Point here tonight who's the new project manager on the project. Maybe he can explain.
Chris Reynolds from Stone Street, recently rejoined Stone Street to oversee the construction of that Bay Point. What was the question?
Question is, is it seems to be a question on the surety that you don't want to put up the surety until after you get started. Surety was supposed to be before you get started.
We're gonna do the covenant first to get going on the site work and then we're gonna sit down with Charlie and go over the bond mountain and the bond posted.
Good with that?
That only affects building permits that are drawn. So if they can get started on the project as soon as this is recorded and you've got documents back that is approved before you've recorded, they can start at any time.
Perfect, thank you.
They can start with the covenant.
Can I put my name or John Hancock?
If you legally change your name to John Hancock, go right ahead.
So I'll have some mics out then.
Right. I'll get you. Either one. Who is that? Want to sign it too, Charlie? You put so much into this, you gotta get.
George, where'd you sign this one? I should put my glasses on.
Took me a while to find it, too.
You wanna come over here?
Yeah.
I got some room.
My name is gonna wait till he get.
Come on. The wrong name, you gotta wait.
It's all right. I wanted to be a doctor, but I didn't have the patience.
Ken, do we have a set of prints that George can sign to? So you've got a signed copy of that file?
What it's gonna do is have the, um...
Can I sit?
Copies made of the signed c -- these signed ones. We don't have a copy machine for that. We can sign a paper copy if you want as well, too.
Delete that.
Yeah, they do.
I don't know if they all -- you need to do all of them. All you need to do is this. So Chris, if I could ask you to make copies of the -- of the bylaws. And return them to us. And at that time I'll have the covenant available for you to take. Thanks, Manuel. Yeah, two copies if you could.
Next, we have the continued public hearing for Six Recovery Road.
Also, just anybody's driving by, wanna stop in for construction any time, just stop in anywhere. My name, if it's a law, any time for construction, so.
Very good. Thank you. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Bob Rogers, today, a final hearing. Mr. Chairman, the site plan has not changed since our last hearing, November thirteenth. So the site plans that we're hopefully approving tonight is the October twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen set. So we had our last continued public hearing on November thirteenth. On November fifteenth, the Conservation Commission voted to issue a positive order of conditions for this set of plans. The one thing that has changed on November thirteenth, you asked us to put out additional details for the screening of equipment on top of the building and some additional detail with respect to the canopy entry. So I had emailed to Ken, the planning office, these revised A1 and A2 from Conserv -- the Conserv Group. It's got a revision for roof screening dated November twentieth. Look at A2, the elevation plan. The upper right, last elevation shows PVC ductile screen with tight slats, maximum floor inches above the equipment. That notation is also on the road. Screening if you're putting this mounted on the roof, twelve inches above each equipment. If you look at sheet A1, the far left roof plan, the condenses have been moved to the rear of the building. We've adjusted the solar panels so that basically, before they were sort of shown straight up and down, but... So we made adjustments to how the solar panels, I depicted, and we've added a note to that detail. Screen three sides extend one foot max above the equipment. And so those notations on plan A1 and A2 are the only changes to the plans since our last public hearing. So I'm asking you to please approve.
That's if the -- that's if the mechanicals ended up -- end up on the roof, right? They may not.
I meant if, you're correct, that's yes. I thought this way would best protect the town in terms of, no matter what the equipment is up there, if the screening extends twelve inches higher, then the town's protected.
Because I'm looking at this and saying, how the hell are you gonna get up there with that roof line?
Well, you know, again, so, you know, it's all, that's all part of the building construction.
Have they designed the solar panels?
No, sir, no.
So the height, if the height were to exceed the s -- to become visible, let us know.
The screen will always, the screen is always called for a foot long.
May I ask a question? It's nothing to do with the approval and I'm just curious. What are the little rectangles on the floor plan, on the outside, under each window? It's just a curiosity I couldn't figure out by looking at the plan.
Well, I think those are windows in the full basement, so you have...
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you.
Get some light in there, natural light.
We all have copies of this draft?
Yeah, I -- we prepared a site plan review approval draft decision. It should be in each of your packages. Bob, if you wanna get a copy, see a copy.
I think the one thing, Ken, right off the bat, that I see that it is a change from the prior submittal, just I think the owner should be the owner as referenced on the deed, which is Coastal Orthodontics, Wareham LLC. So I'm asked that that be that correction he made, just so that it matches the entity for the deed. There was something that I changed on the cover sheet. If you look at the cover of Coastal Orthodontics, Wareham LLC is, is the entity that Kevin Olivera set up. Kevin Olivera's the sole controller of that LLC, but he set that up when he purchased the property. So just that.
So both the applicant and the owner are Coastal Orthodontics?
Well, no, we got the applicant as Kevin Olivera, we have the owner as Coastal Orthodontics.
Charlie, the plans conform to everything you went over now? Everything's good? Okay.
You should have a letter was sent in to the planning office on that last time.
Yeah, I think I did read it. It's not in this, but I had it last week. Did you do that?
Did this, this is taken from other.
Just curious, put it all together. Looks like, looks like Jasmine's work.
How can you have a orthodontist's office without fabrication?
Interesting, yeah, you're right.
Fabricating teeth.
So two changes so far, Coastal, the owner of Coastal Orthodontics, Wareham LLC, and number seventeen of this, of the conditions to take out fabrication.
Um, do we, do we need that entire?
Entire seventeen?
Yeah, I don't think you do.
Maybe not. Because it could be confusing if...
I was gonna say repairing, I thought, but hopefully do repairs.
You wouldn't teeth.
Well, they fabricate them too. That's all, seventeen's out. Okay.
I guess, Mr. Chairman, if you're gonna vote tonight on the, just the first paragraph referencing Mr. Baptiste, he's up here, he's voting here.
Oh, yeah. That would apply on the signature page, too.
Yeah.
Well, without him, none of us can vote, so.
Well, I guess the first thing to do would be to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing? I just have one, one question. Thirty-two parking spots. Is this going to be the actual layout inside this office here? Or something close to it?
Yes, yes.
So there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine potential workstations. Nine potential workstations would be nine patients. Nine employees at those workstations would be eighteen. Few people in the room. This side of the building will house, would potentially need twenty parking spots. What will happen with the other side? If it duplicates, are we now have a parking issue here?
Well, no, you know, the parking is based on office square footage. So what the Wareham bylaw says is you need one space per two hundred and fifty square feet. So I understand what you're saying when you look at workstations and you project ahead and of course, Mr. Olivera wants to have a thriving business. But when you're just strictly looking at zoning, the requirement would be one space per two fifty would be twenty total spaces, and we have thirty-two total spaces, so we exceed it. So we have twenty on one side and twelve on the other. I understand it's an equal split on the first floor of the building, but technically we're twelve spaces over the minimum requirement.
Okay. Can I ask you something?
Yes, what was your question? Right, I think it's these. That's, did those line up perfectly? It's a representation of, of the roof line above, maybe a hundred. That's why I offered my contact information of David Bashan in my email. I didn't draw the plan, but I can see how...
All right, all right, I still don't know what they are. Okay.
It's just showing you where the windows are on that side of the building. That's all that is.
They're what, it shows where there are no windows?
Well, there's those little, right, but there's those little roof juts that are protecting the window.
But they're on the floor, they're shown on the floor, on the floor plan, they're on the ground.
Right, right, yeah, it is unusual, I agree. But if you look at the east elevation, there are those little juts in the roof right above every window.
If, if you would, if you wish, you can have building permit plans of the architectural submitted at the time, they're submitted to the building department to better understand what's going on.
It's always, it's always difficult when you see something and you're on, you don't understand what it is, but that's, that's fine.
Well, you know, you know what's difficult is, is we don't have in our bylaws that they gotta give us a complete set of drawings before they get it. So he's asking for a permit for something before he gives you the drawings. Or they sit here and they say, well, I don't know because I'm not the architect, someone else drew it. Not to be offensive, but you want an approval on something, that, you know, there's an architect, he's looking and he finds something that's not there. Who knows? I'm just saying, we gotta get our book out and we gotta get our policies and our procedures much clearer and the materials and the fencing and the screening in writing. So when they sit there, they, they can't do that. Because I just see it all the time for years. I've sat on these boards and it's, well, we'll give you the drawings after we get the permit. They say it night after night after night. We'll give you drawings when we get a permit.
Could that just be something that was left in an overlay or something?
Well, in, in my defense, because I have been trying to give you more than, much more than in the past, but, you know, I recall Mr. Buckland telling me at one point, it's not a requirement to show floor plans, that the elevations are required, the materials of construction are required, but that we do not owe you floor plans.
No, I mean those little rectangles, could that just be an overlay that wasn't taken out or something?
Well, it could certainly, yeah, and with everything being drawn in CAD, it could be... I know it's not a concrete pad under a concrete window, but it certainly lines up with the roof above.
Well, around three sides of the building, it could be something to keep you from walking into that window that appears to be bumped out, but...
Mr. Chairman, can we add a statement in here on a review and comment on the drawings once you're submitted after the permit?
To what end? What are you looking for?
Well, again, we're, we're granting a permit on a conceptual sketch here and not a, a final drawing. It just, you know, the screening on the roof, the positions, I mean, there's... Once the permit process is there and the drawings are submitted, we don't have any opportunity to...
I believe you will review through Ken, you know, the planning department, the board of health, you know, everyone gets a copy of the building permit submittal to review the plans and the sign off is the sign off that is consistent with the permit that was issued. And so that goes through, it applies to planning as well as conservation.
Yeah, when he goes for his permit, he will show that our approval references the plans that were submitted to us. So the architectural detail, the elevations, will be shown on the, on the plan set that we reference.
Yeah, I mean, our, our plans will go into theirs, but all be packaged together for the building permit application.
You know, John's point is...
You know, John's point is on the, on the mark, and we'll work towards that. You know, the, the elevations make no reference to, I don't think it's a big deal, it's just that it's confusing. Because the elevations have no reference to these rectangles on the ground. It would be nice to know what they are since they're submitting them to us. We can read the roof plan, we can read the interior, we can read the stairs. We can't read, we don't understand what these are, so wasting time talking about them. It would be nice if we're not shown things that are undefined.
Yes.
Because there's no relationship between those symbols and the elevations, which is puzzling.
I mean, unless they were putting little pads on each window for, for the drip.
It could be, it could be that.
Chairman, I think if you were to take a pair of scissors and cut out that roof plan, and slide it over and put it over that, you'd find out that those little rectangles and so forth are just reflections of the roof or ring.
Mm-hmm.
Because if you look in the, in the upper corner of the roof plan.
Oh, yeah, they all line up.
Long L there, that conforms with the, the roof line that's in there.
It does, Charlie, but it doesn't mean anything on the ground.
I understand.
Unless it's concrete pads.
Yes, yes, it's, it's not on the ground, it, clearly. It's a reflection of what the roof is, and, um, it, it makes no sense to show it in a plan that simply is for the floor plan of the building. But it's there, but that's just my interpretation of what they mean.
Oh, yeah, they reflect the roof edge.
Yeah.
It's the sidewalk, you have to jump from one to the other.
So, they're not windows to the basement, like you said.
You, you had asked me what were the two squares on the.
No, I asked you what the squares are on the floor plan, and you said they're windows to the basement, and with a quick look, I said, "Oh, yeah," but then you look at the rest of it, and they're, they're, they can't be, they're not. Anyway, that's done.
No, it's okay, I misunderstood your first question.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Anyway, there was a motion, was there a second to close the public hearing?
Second.
Didn't you make the motion?
No, he made it.
Forgot already, it's been a minute, yeah. Uh, no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And now, I would look for an action on the site plan.
I'd make a motion for favorable action on the site plan. So, how do we word that? Endorse it, to approve it?
With the amended conditions?
Amended conditions, uh, that the applicant has given to Ken and that Ken has, so.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank goodness, I gotta make a dentist appointment, I gotta. Get this thing, let's get this thing going here.
He has an existing office.
Where is he, existing office, is it in Wareham?
Is it in Wareham Crossing? His existing office is in Wareham Crossing?
Yes, yeah, somewhere near the plaza, three sixteen, that's the, the address that's listed.
Seems to be the, oh. Do you want to make the changes, or is the signature page?
That's just the signature page of the one you marked up.
You want it?
No. Need too much?
Of course. Of course to do, I think.
Um, do we, did you find out, are we, uh, in charge of naming streets and numbering houses now, or? Are we getting that, or does that go to the road commissioners?
Uh, haven't, um, haven't resolved as to who's in charge of what on that.
Isn't that the road commissioners for naming the?
It's not a town-accepted way, so.
Are they still one of the same?
No.
Separate border road commissioners.
John, I think the planning board does, uh, mean private streets if they're part of a subdivision, though. If a street name change comes under your authority.
Oh, for, for subdivisions?
For a subdivision, right.
Is that a subdivision?
It wa, it was at, at some point.
Charlie's.
But only if it's, only if it's a private way, if it's a public way, then it comes under the, it's like my jurisdiction of a commissioner's supervision.
Gotcha.
Uh, staff report. There was a, uh, a discussion on the A and Rs for the industrial parks at the last meeting. Did a little research. And came up with some thoughts I'd like to run by the, the board. So, under state law, as you, as you know, one of the, the question that was, that was there was that the, a previous A and R plan had removed a subdivision right-of-way. And the, the question was whether or not that had been done correctly, and if there was a need to have a rescission, action on a rescission of a subdivision. Well, there are three standards for A and R endorsement. The lots on each, on each plan must front on a way of a certain type, that has to have the minimum of frontage requirements, and that the planning board has determined that access to the lots is, is available, otherwise exists. There's nothing in there about rescission of subdivisions. Recision of subdivision comes under chapter forty-one of the state law, section eighty-one W. And the planning board has an ability on its own motion to rescind a subdivision. But no lot sold or mortgaged shall, shall be included in that without the owner's permission. And importantly, the, the rescission will not take effect until recorded in reference to the original plan. Now, based on that, the, the thought was that, uh, an A and R could not rescind a subdivision, could not be used to, uh, to eliminate the, the right-of-way that was shown on the plan in that industrial subdivision. But in the, in the rules and regulations of the, of the planning board, under section four C, the performance guarantee section, says that all, all ways and municipal services shall be completed within twenty-four months of the date of the approval of the plan. And importantly, it says, "Failure to so complete shall automatically rescind approval of the plan." So, my, my thinking is that the planning board on its own motion has the right to rescind. And in the, in the rules and regulations, it has automatically rescind approval with the non-construction within twenty-four months. There's a couple of case law decisions that have, that may be germane, that the planning board may not reverse a decision on endorsement of an A and R. That is, if they've endorsed an A and R, they can't go back on that endorsement. And if no appeal or, or no action to reverse the prior decision, prior to the appeal period being over, then the, the court has said that the, the A and R endorsement stands. And lastly, um, I think what we want to do is, is use the reasonable person test, so that a reasonable person could tell if an action occurred, by, based on the record. So, in looking at this, if the rules and regulations have, have any, any, uh, support or strength, then they've suggested that the subdivision plan is automatically rescinded. But it won't take, that would not take effect until it's recorded in reference to the original plan, based on state law. But if the, then, on the other hand, if the appeal period has passed and no appeal has taken place, the court has not overturned the previous decisions.
So, who's recording it if we rescind it? We have to record it.
No, uh.
So, which one are we talking about? We're talking about a case that came in a week or two back, that there was a, there was, I don't know if it was a subdivision or if it was an A and R, and then they came in and they changed the plan, and then they went back again to change it again. Is that the one we're talking about?
They had, there were, there were two A and Rs that came forward previously in the last, the last meeting. And Bob Rogers had brought them forward at the, that meeting.
Yeah, but.
And they're both for the industrial, two industrial subdivisions. One a private way, and the other a private way off of Patterson's Brook. And I, the, uh, the one, the one on the, on the, uh, opposite Patterson's Brook, owned by the McCarthys, was, was rescinded, or the right-of-way was eliminated by A and R in a previous plan.
Gotcha.
And they were coming back to, to revise that A and R plan.
But not revise that road being eliminated?
No.
Right, because when the A and R was approved previously, it was eliminated on it. So, now they come back to revise the lots to their liking again and still had it. So, so, so Charlie, I believe, caught the mistake on, on the, on the next revision and said something about it, so we voted no. Because the A and R that we approved, or whoever approved previously to it, we missed that, and it was an incorrect approval. So, that's why we voted no the second time around. My beef with the whole thing is, is you can call it A and R all you want. I guess I'm gonna have to learn this, and I'll ask Charlie to teach it to me, but they come in with a lot of whoever the, the applicant may be, and they say, "Well, we want to do this." And then, it seems, a year or two goes by, they come in, they say, "Nah, we want to do this." You know, I mean, we, we, we saw that with the guy with the solar panel field. Six years ago, he got a subdivision, and he let it go, and he, and he applied for extensions, and then he came, now he wants to do something else, now he wants to put solar panels in. It, there has to be a process to follow. All I was getting at with that A and R, and maybe I was wrong, is when the A and R was approved that eliminated the road, that was a mistake in approving that, we missed that. Charlie caught it on the next go-around where they wanted to reconfigure the lot again. Knowing that taking the road out was wrong, they still didn't want to play ball, they said, "No, you can still cross over." Well, you can't, if you take that access away from them, then Charlie says, "Well, yeah, they can do that, but they just put their own road in from the, from the street." Well, that's to say that the state gives them another curb cut. Or they say, "Well, that road's been there for twenty-five, thirty years, it's, it's grandfathered, they can use it." You follow it, and it didn't make sense to me.
Right.
That's why I voted against it. So, what is all this telling me? That we have the right to rescind it?
Well, in fact, it may be rescinded already.
Well, there's, there's more confusion there, because our rules and regs say failure to complete construction within twenty-four months constitute a rescission of the plan. But if any property's been sold or mortgaged within that subdivision, they're excluded. So, what do you do, cut off their access?
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, so, we got a little.
Yeah, I, I think you probably want to revise the, the rules and regulations. But I, I think in, in terms of what's happened here, you have two different, two different situations. The one in Patterson's Brook, I think, is an obvious rescission of subdivision, and you can, you can apply that, that procedure to the, in that case. I think on the other one, where the A and R has already occurred, and there was no appeal of the decision, of that endorsement, that in fact, the subdivision road is, is rescinded and eliminated by the, the previous plan.
By the previous A and R, yeah.
Well, in, in one particular case, that roadway is in use, it was servicing, in this case, tenants.
It was started but not, so the key thing here is completed, partially completed. There's access up to the existing two new buildings.
Well, I think as far as the latest approved plan goes, it was completed.
It didn't create the cul-de-sac.
Are we talking about the one where Charlie pointed out that the lot line had been elim, the, the, yeah, the lot line of the road had been eliminated? Is that the one we're talking about?
Yeah, there were two, that, that occurred on.
Okay, so, um, is that a different issue than, than covered by?
I, I think, now, based on what I see here, um, there are a couple of things that pop out to me. The reference with respect to the performance guarantee, that if you don't complete it within twenty-four months, automatic rescission occurs. But then, it says that, um, in that Horn versus Chad in nineteen eighty-six, uh, that's not what I was looking for.
Well, under, under eighty-one W, that it won't take effect until it's recorded.
Yes, yes, until it's recorded. That means that the planning board, I think, has to make a decision on the rescission for that to become effective. And that's what I was arguing the other night, that the only way that that can take place is if you advertise that you're going to rescind it, and you go through the process, just the same as you would if it was a subdivision plan. And to your point, George, that if there was, if, say, the subdivision road that we're talking about is the one that's up on twenty-eight. Suppose that that lot, that side of it, had been conveyed out. If it automatically gets rescinded, just out of a thin air, gets rescinded, and no notice is given to that individual, he's lost some of his rights. That's why I'm saying that the process may be, that yes, automatic rescission may happen, but not until the planning board actually takes action on it, holds the public hearing, notifies the abutters who might have rights in it that this is happening, you go through the procedure, and that's how you get it recorded.
That's been our practice, is to remove, remove it in the same manner in which it was created.
I, I think that's what eighty-one W says, it says, "Insofar as," I don't remember the words exactly, "insofar as it applies, the same process is used for the modification, amendment, or rescission of a plan." And that only makes sense, because in that particular case, all the properties were owned by the same individual. But there may be cases where, um, perhaps they had a performance guarantee for a part of the road. Lots were conveyed out, lots were built on, and the rest of it, all of a sudden, is just hanging out there with no construction. It can't just automatically be rescinded without notice to those people who got those lots or put those buildings up, because they will have rights in those roads.
Right.
And it's the same, like I had an issue, uh, a number of years ago, uh, out on Sandwich Road. There was an old subdivision that was behind where New England Refrigeration is, right there on the road, went out into the Oakdale area. And somebody wanted to incorporate some of that land into a lot. Well, you can't do that unless you have rescission of the subdivision. So, all the people who owned the land in there got notice that that was going to take place, um, before the planning board. I can remember when that did, when that didn't happen. So, that subdivision got rescinded by going through the process with section eighty-one W. It's the same thing that would happen, I think, in any case. What Ken has told you, I think, is accurate. But I think it includes the fact that, uh, until the rescission is recorded, the only way it can be recorded is a decision of your board. And then, that gets referenced on the original plan, which would be on record in the registry. The registrar or somebody says, "This plan's been rescinded."
And then a notification period would take place.
The notification period would take place the same if, if you vote today, there's a 20-day appeal period that has to run before that becomes effective to where you can sign that decision and get it recorded.
So to your point, we would set the notification.
That's what I'm thinking.
Based on state law. State procedures.
But they would have to come back and request this of us again.
You can do it on your own motion if you want. Which, if you've got this in here, if you've got this regulation in here that it automatically is rescinded after 24 months of non-compliance with construction, then it's almost incumbent upon the board to take action on it.
Yeah, because the life of the subdivision is seven years, so. Statutorily.
It's eight now.
Yeah, eight.
Went to eight. But that's only, that's only for potential zoning changes. If zoning changes take place within that eight-year period, you've got the eight years protection. But it doesn't rescind the subdivision at the end of eight years. You can go on ad infinitum.
So we need a, we need a legal hearing, right?
If you don't have that language in there. Annull it.
We should, we should have a hearing on that then. Public hearing. And get that one right.
On the rules and regs, are you talking?
Well, I think we voted. How did we vote? It was to.
You voted to not endorse, to call it a subdivision.
All right. Well, we should still have, we should, we should still take a look at our wording of some of our stuff and update it.
That's coming next, I think.
Yeah, next on the agenda.
Yeah.
Stay put this inside right here. Keep this bad boy. So we need to make a motion that places on a hearing?
I would suggest we review this with town council. And make a determination as to what, what procedures are required.
As far as the particular, those two instances that were presented to us, I don't think we have to act at all on those. Because on one, I think the cul-de-sac was eliminated because it was replaced with enough pavement to create a turnaround within a parking lot. The park, the site plan disappeared, but sort of the cul-de-sac, and the cul-de-sac should have remained if the site plan didn't advance. And I don't think they have any incentive now to sus, to do away with the roadway or do that action. That was simply to freeze the use.
That's right, that was to protect it against the zoning changes that were voted on at the fall town meeting. For the solar bylaw.
You'll set something up with town council to talk to us on that, or?
Yeah, I think we'll get, get an opinion from town council as to the procedure that we should follow. In the, and in the meantime. I think we should call a public hearing for revisions to subdivision rules and regulations. I have a, a couple of copies here. Of the subdivision rules and regulations that Charlie and I have been revising. And I, this, this came about as a result of the A and R. And the timeframe for approval, these same A and Rs had a 21-day appeal, 21-day decision period, review period. It was, it was passed before the planning board had a chance to meet because of holiday. So what we're suggesting is that because of state law, the way it operates. That there's a submittal requirement to the planning board, followed by a separate submittal to the town clerk. As a start of the, of the review period. And it's the submittal to the planning board that becomes the time when that review period starts, the 20, 21-day review period. So with a fairly simple modification of the subdivision rules and regulations and the procedures for A and Rs. We can have the planning board receiving the A and R at a regular scheduled meeting. In which case you'll have enough time, regardless of how much time in between meetings because of holiday schedules or whatever else, absences or whatever it might be. To act on the subdivision, the A and R subdivision in a reasonable time.
So does that mean that when they come into the, to the hearing and they say, well, I submitted the drawings three weeks ago? It doesn't start until the night we open them?
That's right, they're submitted to the planning board and it's a formal process of.
Right, but you know, you know the battles we go through with this, well, you know, you only have, I got to give you an extension. Who was the one, one doctor there who had the building? We got the plans that night for the third or fourth revision and the time's up, you've got to approve it or deny it. So we got conditions up the kazoo, he can't build it with those conditions, but.
Could we resolve this with just a sign-off that the town clerk needs to look for, that we have received the plan and can be filed with the town clerk?
Yes, you could do it that way as well, too. That would obviously be one of the.
Because if somebody shows up at the window and just says, I want to file this plan with you, she's just, they're just going to take it and stamp it in unless.
Right.
I think the problem is, is with the language, the way it's in your rules and regulations, because it says that it should be stamped in at the planning office as having been filed. And that's what happened. And if it gets filed with the planning office, say, two or three weeks, say, two weeks before your next meeting, and that's the first time you see it, you don't have the 21 days.
That's my point.
Well, I, I thought we'd already resolved that, as I was looking for the language here, but I'm not.
If you look, you've got a copy of it there, it's under.
I'll, I'll give you this copy.
Section 2C. Two, 2B.
Oh, not 2B.
Right now, it says the applicant shall file one originally Form A application, one original plan, and six contact prints. And then down below, it says, once the application is considered complete by the planning staff, it shall be stamped with the date and time of filing. Is there a next one?
He's only got two copies, but I got the original one here.
When it's filed with the, with the planning office, that's where the problem lies.
Yes.
And state law says that a Form A plan gets filed here. And with a copy of the filing going to the town clerk. That identifies when it was filed with this board.
Well, I think it's filed by this board to the town clerk, not by the applicant.
No, it's filed by the applicant.
Yes.
By the applicant, but it has to be, it has to be filed here first. Otherwise, you get messed up by not having the 21 days that you are allotted by state law to look at that plan and see if it's a subdivision or not. That's what happened the other time when he said, well, you know, I granted, I'm going to grant you an extension for the 21 days. There is no extension for a Form A plan. There is none. You have 21 days from the date it's filed and it gets filed here.
So when they bring it into the office, though, that's kind of for review to make sure it's.
Yeah, all it is is a review and then Ken can put it on the agenda for the following meeting and that following meeting is when it is actually filed.
All right.
And if, the modification to the language would be if they filed both applications here. Then George is an example, or a clerk or somebody would sign them as having been received on 11/27.
We used to have that three-part form.
Right. It's received on 11/27. One copy goes in your file, the second copy goes to the town clerk's office the next morning. And she stamps it in then as a record of the fact that you received it today.
That, that day. So.
That starts the 21 days in which you have to render your decision. You can make it that night or you can wait till the next meeting.
So that's where we've been going wrong, though. We, when they go into the office for review, it seems that it gets, they consider that the stamped-in date and it could sit there two, three, four weeks before it gets to us.
Yeah.
So anyway, this is one, part of this discussion is the reason why I wanted to have the public hearing on the rules and regulations and revisions and talk about, about the same subject and make a decision on revisions.
That was next week, but.
We should have a, a notice in the paper.
I know, I'm teasing.
Well, would you recommend a workshop first to iron out the changes, or?
If you want to do it that way, we could do a workshop.
There's some other, other scrivviness things in here that both Ken and I looked The issue about whether a, an A and R plan actually can be rescinded, that's in your regulations right now, that if it's not recorded within six months of the date that you sign it, that it's automatically rescinded, that's illegal. And I checked with the registry of deeds to see if they have any other information and they don't. The six-month requirement is simply for a definitive plan. So if I came in with an A and R and you endorsed it, which essentially says you have no concern with that plan. If I want to record it, I can. If I don't want to record it, I throw it in the drawer and forget it. That, that's what an endorsement really means, is the planning board has no interest in what's shown on that plan. Because it's not a subdivision.
Okay.
So we'll set up a workshop and then have a.
Public hearing.
And then after that, you can decide on public hearing if you think it's appropriate.
Well, I just think we, we, it's time to, to reword a lot of these, these things. We're getting stuck on. Like, that's a dumb one. And, and we've all said it, zoning, and when I'm zoning for years, it's the same thing. We just got the plans, how can we be out of time? But they brought it in three and four weeks previously.
And we did resolve it before, but I think the previous change, the three-part form disappeared and all the, the direction was you would leave your plan with the planner and he would determine whether it was complete. And then get submitted to us. And a lot of times it wouldn't get submitted to us till the night it was.
Right.
Yeah, but still the filing starts when they, when it rings it in to you. The completeness part of it can still be there. That's not a problem.
Right.
Well, we have to make sure.
The problem was, arose out of that, was the, the review of completeness was taking way too long. And it was ruffling some feathers.
Well, whose feathers was it ruffling, though? Now that he's not sitting at the table, you can tell me, whose feathers could be?
Well, there was an attorney in town said he'd never file anything with him again, he'd go right to the town clerk. You know, three months to review a plan was a bit much.
All right, next on the, the staff report is the chapter 40D, 43D expedited permitting program. We've just started on that, got a very rough draft of a, of a permit guideline from SERPED, who is our contractor in this instance. We'll be bringing that to the planning board in the, some probably time, sometime in the month of December. To look at and comment on as part of the process that we're trying to complete. We asked for some fairly substantial revisions to the draft that had been submitted, so we're in the process of getting those, getting those made, edited, edits done in the plan.
When this was. When this was brought up before, I think the chief objection was it took away some local control. It was treated a lot like a party B, that if they didn't like the answer they got here, they could just get it overruled. Is that an app description?
No, it's not. It's, you can deny a permit application that comes before you under expedited permitting, you just have to do it in a timely fashion. Essentially, it's the idea that it's specifically expedited permitting, that you expedite all the, all the local permits. And get them done within 180 days. As part of the process for the state to. Put these, these properties that are under the expedited permitting on their state marketing.
So after 180 days, it's a constructive approval?
Essentially, yes.
Why does it take 180 days to, to run something through the system?
It, it doesn't, it doesn't actually. You guys.
It does when you're dealing with some my laws that we signed tonight. It took more than 180 days just to get any information out of them.
Yeah, and it's still not really complete, so.
Yeah, well, one of the things you can do is you can extend it if the information is not complete. You don't have to make the decision if the, if the facts and the, and the, the plans aren't submitted.
Just updating cost, two basically match into what the stretch goes out, that re-implacer about to come. Major zoning changes coming, looks like from the state as well.
Yeah, the, as, as Alan pointed out, the, the state legislature is going through a couple of different bills that could substantially make, make some substantial changes in the zoning that we have and what we're allowed to do and.
Yeah, it removes a lot of the local building. When is that expected?
I'm sure it'll be contractor friendly.
First of the year, January, they'll be back at it. We'll see what happens. We'll just have to keep monitoring it.
Yeah, one of the things that I think makes a, a, a big difference to the, to this community is the accessory apartments being as of right under a couple of the different bills that are, that are submitted.
Do you have the bill numbers by any chance?
S-81, this is the Senate bill. I don't know what the House bill is offhand.
The Senate bill virtually got passed and the House never really acted on it. We have to watch to see what happens with the House coming January. So that means every, every house in town will be a two-family. Could be anything.
As long as, as long as it's building.
Besides the in-laws, that's sides for rent.
Right.
Forty-three U that we have is part of the Community Compact. We have to get that finalized so we can apply for some more Community Compact projects as well. So we have to make a decision on that.
The, in terms of the master plan process, SERPED is also under contract to do the workforce on this, on the master plan. What we have is the survey, online survey is coming to a close as of the 30th, Thursday of this week. So if you haven't gotten your, your comments in, go right ahead and get online and fill out a form. Will be, what we've, what we figure is that we'll have a vision plan in December, the month of December. And the, the, the rest of the master plan draft document sometime in January. So the. In terms of timing, this Thursday is also a deadline for the Massachusetts Downtown Initiative Grant Application Form. And I wanted to know if there were any ideas that the planning board had for the, the grant.
Can we take the, can we get the bump of curbs taken out?
For, for the amount of money that they're providing, I don't think you'd be able to do that.
I'm just being funny. So I thought.
Cars keep bouncing off them, they'll gradually shrink.
Maybe from one of the plow guys.
Well, they do it every winter. It's two winters in a row, they wiped out the one in front of Palm and Say, Eastern Bank. You can't see them in the snow.
So if you have any. So if you have any, any ideas, let me know in the meantime.
Do you not want to eliminate those? Okay.
No, too expensive for the, the grant money that's available. Status of projects is the last item I had on there. Did you have any questions on any of them? ALDI's is, is expected to open on the thirtieth. They have a, an announcement out for their opening, grand opening.
Saw the flyer.
Yep.
I can report that the, the final course of paving has been put down on the majority of that project. What they have not included would be that little corner where Beaton's building still is because that's not part of it. And some of the paving around the very easterly end of the project that's closest to the corner, where you go into the mall, there's a little standalone building there and there's some paving that goes around that, which they haven't done.
Right.
But the majority of the paving for the ALDI site, the way that we had discussed it, has essentially been completed. Striping's in. And we buy there tonight, all the way down here and all the little lights are on. Parking lights, parking lot lights are on. So they've made some progress. Much of the landscaping's there, but I haven't taken a plant count to see if everything's up to snuff with that.
So they're seeking a temporary CO?
Correct.
I assume so, yeah.
I would, I would think seeing that they've sent out their grant opening letters and coupons and all for the thirtieth. Oh, that's good. How's the, how's the pots place coming? Coming right along, is it?
Yeah, they're still working on the building.
The auto zone?
Auto zone, yeah.
Yeah, they've, they've painted it, it's a nice orange color now.
Good, good, good.
And that'll be the next in line. And then they'll, they'll continue with the, the request for extension of the buildings on Toby Road, which the planning board had recommended against previously. And they'll also be asking for a, a use variance for a drive-through for Wendy's Restaurant at the location of the Beaton buildings that are there now.
No more bank there.
No, no, not a bank. A Wendy's Restaurant is what's being proposed there now.
Oh, I thought they were looking at the Wareham Pharmacy building.
Wendy's may be looking at all kinds of opportunities.
Speaking of Wendy's, I thought of you Manny the other day. I was sitting across the street in De Angelos having lunch and I looked across at Wendy's and the units on the roof looked terrible. I says, oh, he'd be happy.
What about the traffic study?
Traffic study will come along with the, with the proposed use.
Wasn't Walmart due for a second traffic study?
Review, yeah.
A review, yeah, follow-up review on there. I can check the conditions on the, on the project, see what's, what's required.
I thought you said it was two years.
That's going to be an interesting thing because when you, having now had to come from the Westway Ham End, go into Toby Road and then take a left into ALDI's just past Beaton's building, you're right in line with the flow of traffic coming the other way. That wants to go into Walmart.
Right.
Right.
Right in line with it. So it makes it confusing.
It does.
So.
But it's not all Walmart's fault.
Oh, no, I'm not saying it's Walmart's fault. It's just that those, those two intersections with, with the, with the left turn lanes, the way that they are, you're headed right for the guy coming the other way. Not a good thing.
And the right turn lane into Walmart's site disappears.
Pretty much, yeah.
When you come around the corner, it melds into that little lane.
Yeah. So that might be something to think about in terms of the modifications of the plan and whatnot.
Excuse me, keep your train of thought. So, so they want to extend buildings and change buildings and what have you, then, then we can hold them hostage to fix the road?
I would think that if it turns out to be an issue, you know, because it's a change in the special permit.
Right.
Their building's so close to the road, they can't move it.
Say, you can't move it now. But we can, we can not make it longer, you know, towards the driveway.
But if that liquor store goes in there, is that a relocation of an existing liquor store? That's a new permit?
It's a new permit.
It's a new permit, it's a transfer of a license from an existing.
It's just a relocation of a liquor store to another location.
Which one is it, which one is relocating?
One of the. Next to five guys. Next to five guys.
The Rosebrook one already? Okay. That's even going to congest that Toby Road even more. I'm telling you, hey, go down that thing six times a day.
Yeah.
We, we're going to have a real problem with that Toby Road. It's going to need to, I don't know, it'll, it'll have to be a, you, you, the only way to correct it, I think you'd have to redirect Walmart traffic back out to the Cranberry Highway across from the Wareham Pharmacy. Because there's no, there's no room to extend on the right or left now. Any case, anyways, wait till the traffic study. Can we come back to the parking on this coastal orthodontics for a minute? So we're held to 250 square feet per parking spot on lot size.
For office use, under, under the zoning regulations.
Again, I, I remember addressing this issue years back with the zoning board when we came to the West Wareham Gas Station. And the counting of the parking spots at the actual pumps towards that. There's a classic example where that, it's far too congested there. Even at 50% utilization, if the other side of that building occupies the same way this one does, at 50% utilization, you'll have consumed every one of those spots. Now granted, we're at a dead end street and, you know, there's no, there's no on-street parking there, right? On Recovery Road?
There shouldn't be.
Okay. So I think we need to, and I don't know how this gets done, it probably can't happen tomorrow, but we need to really consider the use type in that, in that formula. And, and I have to say that even the ALDI's parking lot, if that place, that place alone will consume that entire parking area in there. This formula is not good depending, just based on square footage of the lot. We have to consider the use type and the, and the volume of exchange. The reason there's a problem with the West Wareham Common Farms and it happens with the other Common Farms and it happens with, you know, the 7-Eleven in East Wareham, is the exchange rate of consumers in and out of there is the problem. Now, we have a longer lag with the dentist office, people are going in for an hour at a time. So there's, there's less of an exchange rate. But if you're looking at, you know, a retail business with a, with a high exchange rate of five-minute intervals in between, they, they need more parking spots. Otherwise, you end up with the problems that we have on the Cranberry Highway and, and that the, the exchange coming out of an existing Wendy's or an opposite to an existing McDonald's, opposite to an existing Burger King, opposite a, a, a De Angelos, right? With the number of parking spots that's happening there, we, we, there has to be more than, into the calculation than 250 square feet per consumer. And I, I, I personally think it needs to be addressed as soon as possible if the town's going to continue to expand and permit these new buildings. So the exchange rate in an auto zone right now, I would say is probably a 10-minute stop inside there. Nobody's hanging out there for an hour. So we have a high exchange rate and now you're going to move into a restaurant. The type of restaurant is going to matter that goes next to that auto zone. You know, if it's a 99 and they're spending an hour sitting down, that's fine. But circulation around the parking lot is another problem.
It makes a difference too, especially if you've got the drive-up window because that's different than a bank.
Yes.
Much different.
Yes.
And if you take a look at places like the West Wareham Dunkin' Donuts in the morning, the way that that line extends around the building and what they were able to approve, or improve on across the street from the Old Ocean Spray a number of years ago when Dino did that one over. The key, really, the key we want to call it, depends on the size of the lot and how you even do it. And that's the, one of the issues you had with that potential Sonics that was going to come in. So I agree exactly with what you're saying. So the trip generation makes a big difference on how many spaces you've got and the turnover, how long they're, they're there and everything, so.
Right, and then the traffic management shouldn't be in the middle of February when, when everything's dead. We, we just missed the traffic measurement, it should have been on Black Friday. Right, I, I can't, I, I just, I, I see this over and over and I, I travel the better part of the eastern Massachusetts into a lot of small towns. My, my wife got the knucklehead idea of let's go to the Rentham Shops on Black Friday.
Why do you blame the wife?
Do, do you know what that traffic looked like?
My wife went.
Looked like the cashier lined at Target.
Yeah, but. I got, I got trapped for a half an hour on the backside where the buses. Top everybody off on the backside, I couldn't get out of there.
That's why you need to shop local.
Well, you know, I'm looking at this, this thing here. I mean, my vote would be to look at small business support on Main Street and see how we're utilizing Main Street because that's going to dictate the viability of a Main Street.
Yeah, take the pump boats out, put some parking along the water in the back.
Take the big banks out and put little shops back.
Yeah, so, but to back, back to just, I just want to throw this out to the board. The parking consideration, the drive-through consideration is monstrous. Particularly where, where would that thing dump out? You'd curl back around just opposite.
You'll, you have to see the plans when they're submitted.
Yeah, so I think we just really need to pay, pay a heavy focus on traffic, traffic flow consideration.
Will be to increase the turning movements going into the ALDI's parking lot substantially.
Yeah.
Remember right now that there is no drive-through allowed in that area.
In that particular.
There's not a drive-through allowed in the, in the town.
Right.
Yeah, they have to go for a special perm.
A use variance, actually.
Yeah, it's not going to be easy to get. Have to show a handicap. They've already, you've already lost five restaurants in that, between that and the Robinsons property. Looking at potentially moving there and walking away because they could get it. Drive-through isn't going to be worth them fighting for.
Yeah.
One of the reasons why the bank, I think that's why. Whatever happened to the bank in, when you pull into, what's the plaza there? You know, J.C. Penney's on the right. Very first corner, that was supposed to be a bank, wasn't it?
Yeah, but same thing.
That they walked away to. And what happened to Sonic? Did they leave town completely?
No, my understanding is they're still playing around with different locations.
Oh, okay.
I'm not sure whether they're going to pull the trigger in the town or not.
I was curious, I mean, I, I went to one down in Carolina there, but. Is the master plan dealing with any of these issues?
It, it does not deal with setting of, of location of, of, of particular uses, but does talk about.
Drive-throughs.
Does talk about drive-throughs.
Well, there, there's a good illustration there. If they could do, maybe that, not a good illustration because that site was overbuilt before Wendy's even entered the picture. But if you could handle your traffic from within the shopping center and not have access to a roadway, not direct access, so you wouldn't have the left turn lane crossing issues. I don't know why that wouldn't be allowed. You know, but current, our current arrangement doesn't allow it. But I think the reason we don't, one of the reasons that drive-throughs aren't allowed is because of the lane crossing accidents associated with fast food. And we didn't want the mistakes of Cranberry Highway and East Wareham to become amplified in West Wareham.
Well, that study that I've got for West Wareham that was done probably seven years ago, I think can't even.
I have a copy of it, yeah, Claire gave me a copy.
It was very clear that the people in West Wareham did not want fast food restaurants. One of the reasons they didn't want drive-throughs in that study. And Wendy's fits right into what they don't want.
Yeah, I think that.
That was seven years ago.
Yeah, they haven't changed.
Different today.
Not from the people we both know.
There is some examples of that though. I, I actually think the Walmart in Fairhaven has a fast food restaurant within the parking lot.
It does.
In, in which it forces you to zigzag through the parking lot and come out at the proper light.
They have one in the front of that parking area.
Yeah.
But it's in, this entrance and exit is on both sides. The curb cuts and also on a third street that goes by the, past the house, you can come in that way too.
And, and I think also Colony, what's, what's, Colony, no.
Over in Planet?
Yeah, yeah.
The Wendy's over there.
They're, they're in a separate little.
Yeah, that's a separate world.
Themselves.
Well, that, that's the Wendy's there, but I think, isn't, there, there's another restaurant inside Colony Shopping Center there.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I don't think it's a drive-through though.
It's not Wendy's though.
There's a Mexican restaurant in there or something else.
Yeah, but that Wendy's jacked up anyways because you've got to take a right-hand turner. It, it forces you to go into the industrial park and then there's nowhere to turn around. I mean, you've got to go all the way, if you follow the law, you're going to have to go right and it's going to push you all the way back towards that.
Well.
All right.
With that said, the parking, the parking can, can be an issue. I, I, we can look at the wording of that as well.
I think what we can do is start thinking about spring town meeting and zone changes that you'd want to accomplish at the, or bring before town meeting.
What's the deadline for, for submitting any changes to be considered?
February?
The sooner the better to, to start on.
Has to be ready by February, ready to go.
The points that you raised, what process do we go about to kind of implement?
Well, one of the things is.
These discussions have to get somehow.
If, if we're talking about parking, one of the things is to look at modern parking requirements and, and reconsider the list of uses, which is wholly incomplete in the zoning bylaw. Doesn't distinguish between office space and that medical office that you're talking about now.
Yeah, retail space and.
Well, like on this case where you have those 21, whatever the count is, chairs, they may not all be occupied, you know?
That's what I'm saying, even at 50% utilization and equal on both sides.
Well, in any case, what we can do is we can discuss this based on some, some regional numbers about what's being used for parking and how, how we can apply that to our, say, our article of the zoning bylaw. I'd also, I'm working with Dave Requena with the building commissioner on changes to Article 13 and the non-conforming uses, zoning compliance. As to make that a little bit more user-friendly.
But in order to get somewhere with this, do we need to meet at another time of work, work sessions or? Would be, would be a good idea to have like a workshop, go over it and then you have to have a public hearing, don't you?
Yeah.
So.
You'd have to have a public hearing.
We, we should probably have a workshop until we go over some of these things.
So we're talking about a, a, a public hearing in January. So a workshop in December.
Twenty-fourth.
Yeah, it'll be your Christmas present.
Only one meeting in December, 13th?
First meeting, right?
Would you have one in between Christmas and New Year's, that typical?
It'd be two years, two days after Christmas for the second meeting.
Some meeting in December, isn't it?
December, you have the 11th?
On the 11th.
And the, and the 25th.
I'm not coming the 25th.
By seven o'clock, you'd be wanting to get out of the house.
I'll pick you all up.
So what happens in that case then? That's the only meeting for December?
Unless you schedule something.
Unless we schedule an off day, if you want to have a workshop as a separate day.
There'll be a lot of A and Rs filed on the 12th.
So the second Monday in January is the 8th? So you'd go from.
The 8th, yeah, the, the 11th to the 8th, which is about a month.
Very difficult to do anything between the 20th and the 4th or 5th of January. People are away, everything. You heading to Vegas?
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth, I'm going, I think I might be going that, that weekend.
Do you want to hold a workshop on a day outside of the Monday meeting? Or do you want to have a, the 11th is a workshop as well? Or do you wanna have it, the eleventh is a workshop as well?
Well, given the span between meetings.
Sooner the better.
Um, I don't know if you could conduct our regular business and do a workshop on the same night?
It seems like we're, we're a little bit light on business, so I think it, it can be a, a good timing to have a workshop.
I think we get the pages, make a copy of the pages where the, the, the wording is and we'll go through the wording.
Does that give you enough time, though? Because if you're gonna hold a public hearing at the end of January, you've gotta advertise that at least fourteen days out.
Yeah, two weeks.
So, I mean, the meeting night, you'd have to advertise it right away, wouldn't you?
Yeah.
Enough time? I don't think you would.
Unless we, unless we have a.
With the workshop, you would, it's not a public hearing.
No, but if you, if you have to advertise for the public hearing to approve zoning changes or make recommendations for the town meeting, and that takes place the end of January, it won't give you much time to have a workshop and then make changes and come back and talk about it.
Was this workshop for the rules and regs or was this for zoning changes?
I, I was getting both, getting to both.
You are ambitious.
Well, like I said, I don't think that the wording is, I mean, I know like, uh, Mr. Fitzgerald had all his complaints about the materials for building, you know, it says, you know, metal, this, that, the other thing. We gotta take that paragraph and really word it with the proper materials and, and so we don't just get space buildings. That's all we're getting is metal space buildings.
Is that committee dissolved now that was?
No, I went to one or two meetings, that was it.
Or is it still working?
The zoning study committee?
Hmm.
We, that could be, uh, that could be re, uh, re-upped again, brought together.
Yeah, they, they stopped though, didn't they?
Well, we were communicating via email.
By pigeon.
That was set up by town meeting, wasn't it?
Yes, it was.
There should've been a date of when that, when you made your report, that committee would be over after that.
That's right.
So, therefore, you'd have to, have, have a town meeting out for that.
To reconstitute it.
Well, we, we, we still can take the, the verbiage and, and, and go over it, you know? We have pretty experienced engineers, pretty experienced architect and, and, uh, you know, I, I go to work every day.
Couple of ham and eggers in between?
That's it.
All right, so, uh, what we can, what I can do is talk with the, uh, the chairman about what, what we do on a workshop.
Well, we can try to cover both issues because as far as, um, zoning changes for town meeting, we can't get too, especially in a spring town meeting, we can't get too carried away. But if we wanna get a couple items in there.
So, it's setting priorities on what we wanna do.
Yeah, well, I don't think we can go in with twenty-seven zoning articles. Might be able to get some things accomplished.
We had two zoning articles at the fall town meeting. One took up half of the warrant.
Out of it go.
It got passed.
There you go. You build it, they'll come.
Planning Board rules and regulations, you could just hold a public hearing and adopt them and you don't have to go to town meeting.
Oh, you don't?
No, that's just, that's just a public hearing.
Say that again?
But so, the rules and regs is just a public hearing and adoption.
Even.
And you file it with the town court and.
Even for design guides and so that?
No, design guidelines you, you wanna have as, I think, as part of the zoning, is my understanding, yeah.
But that's what we need to, we need to take a look at that.
I mean, that, maybe that's one of the things we can talk about is.
Requirements, for example, I had, I kinda kept the notes and you, you anticipated one of them. I think when we get drawings submitted, the only way to really evaluate, if we're concerned about the fabric of the town, is to have not only the elevations in a plan, but I think a perspective, a, a, a real three-D view with neighboring buildings or structures.
To show the context.
Illustrated also to see what the scale is. I drove by the Cranberry Highway, the new metal building going up on, across from.
Yeah.
It's a monster.
I think it's actually smaller than what was there.
Is it really? Well, it doesn't mean that that was any better than what was there before, but.
It's a smaller footprint.
What's in the back though?
But I, I, I was driving, when I was driving to the meeting today, I'm saying, all of the engineering material that Charlie deals with, which is absolutely essential and it's gonna be underground, you're never gonna, I mean, you'll see some, maybe you'll see some lights, you might see some parking signs, some signs. The main thing we deal with are the structures that are being built in the town. And the, I, I, I submit that tomorrow we can control how they look, how they look not only in themselves, but relative to the, to their neighbors.
Right, and that's what Mike Fitzgerald used to say. He says, "It's just metal space buildings." Every, everything that come in, it's just a metal space building.
So.
So, we gotta get that wording a little bit better, that it, that it leads, even if you, even if you, uh, come up with some, you know, put some siding, put some canopies, put some whatever, you take away the space building look. That was his main complaint, I'm pretty sure that this is.
Right.
So, if we can, whatever we can do, I mean, I, I intend to send each of you an outline before we have our, our, uh, work set, workshop, just to get your reaction to it and, and how much of it we can put into the code.
When you do that, make sure you put down no response.
No, pardon?
Because you have open meeting law. When you send something out to everybody in the board, put down please do not respond, we'll discuss it in the next week.
Oh, I see, okay, thank you, thank you.
If people respond back to you, you have an open meeting law violation.
Right.
Type, type that right in your email, so not respond.
One of the options you have is to send it through me and I can distribute it to the.
Okay, sure, sure, thank you. Well, just so that it isn't, we don't come into a meeting without, you know, code.
No, it's fine, but I just wanna be sure we don't.
Yeah, yeah.
What is the purpose of that Cape and Island building?
Tires.
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 It's gonna be tires again.
Tire business.
Well, certainly that structure's bigger than what was demoed there.
No, it isn't actually.
Really? It looks like it's closer to the, the curb.
Big building.
It's very close to the road, to the street.
It's approximately the same location, but the other building tied into the back building. And this one falls short of that by.
It's no closer to the street than the old one was?
For the same.
Well, I just don't understand the circulation of trailers going in and out of there.
If you wanna come in, we can show you the, we can show you the site plan and I can go over what the, uh, development project is.
I, I'd like to see a trailer get in there and turn around myself.
Well, actually, they did that, they did it before and they continued after the demo. They still had trailers delivering there with, to the back building.
All right, I, like I say, I saw the steel go up, I said, "Wow, back in business," but I'm still curious what's in the back building.
They told me a few years back, that back building, and I don't know if that's still the case. When it was Cape and Islands tires, before it changed, it was full of tires. It was distribution for.
Just, just the storage.
All of southeastern Mass and the islands.
They were distributing tires there.
Okay, what else you got?
When do we schedule the works?
Workshop is gonna be scheduled for December eleventh.
On the meeting night?
Mm-hmm.
So, so in regards to the announcing of a public hearing, why can't you announce that before the workshop?
Well, because you wanna know what you're gonna be announcing for the public hearing. The workshop is to go through the priorities of the, and make a decision on what actually you got, you want to have as, as zoning articles or.
All right.
And then we have the, the public, then we can announce the public hearing that those, those last couple of weeks of December and the first couple of weeks of, and the first week of, of January to meet our fourteen-day requirement before the public hearing.
It's fourteen days, okay. Am I right? And then it's the middle in February to the town meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
February, March, somewhere along there, April.
Long as it beats April, right?
One other piece of information, just, uh, for your implication. Bay Site Ag Cultural up on Charlotte Furnace Road.
Yeah.
They, the building is up, they're working on the interior of it. I was in there today, uh, looking at the grading, the fine grading around the building for the paving. They're gonna put the binder down tomorrow. That's one that you approved the site plan on, but I don't recall whether or not you had included anything in there on, um, security or, or performance for landscaping and all of that sort of thing before they get occupancy. I did talk with the owner on that and just advised him two, three weeks ago and I happen to see him. But I wouldn't be surprised for you to see something like that. 'Cause I don't believe they'll get the top courses mixed down this fall and landscaping certainly won't be done between now and spring.
Right.
Also, they've made a request, uh, regarding some additional lighting on site. They would like to place, I think it's three lights along the driveway, starting from the corner of Charlotte Furnace. Let's see.
They had a lighting analysis that was done and decided, determined that the, uh, there wasn't sufficient coverage.
Right.
Along the, uh, the curvilinear driveway that enters.
Right, and we sat there and I told him that he needed some lights down the driveway and Mike Fitzgerald said he didn't want it, 'cause the neighbors might be disturbed. I says, "He's four hundred feet back," so now proof's in the pudding. It gets dark four hundred feet along the way, or however long his driveway is. He needs some lights to see coming in and out. No offense, but a blind man could've seen that one coming.
Well, they've, you know, they, during certain times of year, they have staff that stay there quite late and they'd like some security lighting along the driveways, the way it was relayed to me.
Yeah.
And they'd asked that we consider that a minor modification. I don't know, uh.
Well, I wouldn't, I would not have a problem with lights down that driveway. I think the one out towards the corner of the street though, as long as there's a shield from the road where it faces in, then he's fine. But yeah, I think they need to light up that driveway.
We need any more than that for them to submit?
Oh, there's no houses.
Ask them to submit the analysis, the lighting analysis as well.
What was the one who handled the houses?
And they are well before that.
All right, so we'll, um. We will take that action on the next agenda.
Okay.
You could approve that as not requiring a public hearing and.
If you deem that it's a minor modification, which it seems pretty. I did go up there and it, I think having one out by the road would be beneficial to everybody. Uh, what else you got on your, uh?
That's it.
You want?
Thank you very much for your attention.
What's your, what's the downtown?
Downtown initiative?
Yeah.
Do you have any ideas about what you'd like to, uh, the application is due on Thursday? So, looking for last-minute ideas?
Storefront change? Where the building is changed?
Remove the benches.
Well, we're telling them some of those benches have stayed because of the gas and bus problems.
Why, they stop in the middle of the road anyway.
Whatever they want, but that's what some, that's what benches are for. We had one thing, we had a sign initiative program back about five years ago. Didn't go real well because most of the merchants financially weren't, you know, prepared to do anything. Business is getting better, so maybe some kind of program for downtown where they can redo their storefronts or maybe looking at going and looking at the back, you know, the merchant's waysite.
Yeah, right.
Doing work back there, maybe putting a centralized trash center back there they get money for. So, all the dumps is going to one area enclosed, things like that.
That'll look a lot better.
One-stop shopping?
One-stop shopping.
Now, is the grant, i- is, is the money, is the money, um, a case where they need to borrow money? That's what killed them last time is, I think they were kinda figuring that like each store might get so many hundreds of dollars for a sign that they could utilize and turned out to be just a loan and like they's.
No, I think they got like half or something.
Is that what it was? Yeah.
A lot of it is for the storefront repair, I think it was up to twenty-five thousand and they had to spend twenty-five. That was the problem, dollar for dollar.
Yeah, see, that, that was the kicker, they, they didn't have.
Business was too tight then for that.
Yeah, along the, a couple of them along the front could use some help and in the back you could, could use a lot of help, you know?
I don't think we're ready for that, uh, boardwalk along the river and all that to be developed yet. That's a major project.
The town parking lot could use some sprucing up.
Yeah.
Which one?
The one side of Eastern Bank.
Yeah, the back and the south here in the front. They clean the front up pretty good though.
Uh, it, it still could use a little work.
Yeah, the ladies do a pretty nice job.
Women do a really nice job with the back and the corner.
I use that all the time because it's a lot easier than getting into the Eastern Bank parking lot.
Much easier.
But having a cut through there, a specific cut through where you can walk without tripping on roots or, you know, on, on, uh.
Yeah.
Branches and things like that, it would be good to have an actual connection there where you can walk easily.
Yeah, maybe you'd between private and public businesses to have some kind of mutual. 'Cause in order to cut through, you have to, they owe bank property as well.
You're just sort of cleaning up the back where those big retaining walls are, just to make it a little more attractive.
Yeah. The back is.
Use that all the time because it's so much easier than the Eastern Bank lot.
Mm-hmm, I agree too.
The back spots are supposed to be for the employees in the area there, actually.
Yeah, that would be.
You're gonna find out on the street naming stuff so we can address that other issue.
Yes, yeah.
What is, what is this documented here for this address change?
She'll have it on the tape.
This fellow's asking for an address change?
Yeah, his mail's going to the wrong place.
Do they have to do anything with that?
I think so, just change it in the record.
Should be.
Not a moment.
The board doesn't have to do anything, huh?
Is that, is that called until we at what?
Yeah.
I think, I told him he, he needs to go before the road commissioners. He's trying to get his, those mail gets delivered properly and stuff. He wanted to, just, you know, it's just where it is, is, you know, mobile home park.
Yeah.
You go right through the park, he continues property.
Well, what, he, he says it's going to the wrong address. Can't he just put it in at the post office to change his address?
There's a problem that whatever it is, you know, I just, my suggestion to the billionaires to get on the road commissioners' agenda. I gave them email address, so, you know, if they can't, he should be able to handle it. It's been an issue for a long time, you know?
My daughter moved and when she moved, she changed her address, all my mail went there. I get mail for like three weeks. So, she comes home to do her laundry and brings a big box and says, "Oh, by the way, here's your mail." Hey, thanks a lot. Now she moved back home, all my mails come back.
She got all the bills.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Motion? You got something, Mr. Chairman, is that it?
I believe that is it.
If that be the case, I make a motion to the chairman.
Oh, I was gonna do that.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
I'll second it.
Two out of three falls, let's go.
One, two, three, second.
All in favor?
All right.
opposed? I suppose we could call that forty-five.